Good evening, everyone. Tonight is September 21st, 2021. It is regular city council meeting in the city of West Liberty, Iowa. We have all councilors here tonight. Also in attendance is City Manager Dave Bollard and Deputy City Clerk Sherri Hope. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes five zero. Approval of the consent agenda, which is the regular city meeting minutes of September 7th, 2021.
I have a motion with corrections. Under new business item B, the last paragraph, discussion by Zacharias provide half dates blah, 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 needs to be moved to item J. It goes with that economic development, not with the resolution. And then the other item is under item D. It should have been four one instead of five oh.
Is there a second with that motion with the amendments?
Second.
This motion is second. Is there any further? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes five zero. We are on to the vendor vouchers claims list. We have two claims lists in front of us. First one tonight is in the amount of $721,559.69.
Motion.
There a second? Motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes five zero. We have a second vendor vouchers claims list in the amount of $101.50 for Cardinal sign graphics.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
That's A.
Passes four zero on extension. And we are on to public comments and correspondence. I see that we have two individuals here tonight. Lisa Browning, you're listed first. Would you like to? You can sit there or you can come up to the podium, however you'd like to.
Where's the podium? Oh, there it is. Walked right past it. Well, good evening. I'll take this off to talk. First of all, I'm here to ask for a ban on all future street closures in our downtown area. I want to start out by saying that the events are wonderful that happen there and the number of years they've been going and how they've grown is a great thing. The location is horrible. So here's what I'm reporting. First of all, there was no notice to the downtown buildings or businesses that the street was actually going to be closed. I went in three weeks prior and asked if we were going to be notified when I saw it in the paper that the Children's Festival was going to be there. And Lee told me then that they wouldn't work on that. I went back in two weeks later and that's when you guys had approved it, I guess, that week. And then they did bring a letter over, but that was like Thursday. The festival was Saturday. We did not get any notification about the one Sunday prior. In fact, the police officer didn't know about it until that morning when they knocked on her door as well for the Catholic Church festival. So first of all, no notice. The day of the event, I got down there to open my shop about nine o'clock. I had to park behind Lisa's place. There was no parking anywhere. So I actually went up to Stephanie and she told me to go to Francisco to ask. So I went over and found Francisco and asked if possibly the vendors could move their cars up to the high school and maybe be shuttled back in or something. And he said he would probably announce it on a P A system, but I don't think that was ever done. So there was no parking within probably a three block area. As you can imagine, that is my busiest day of the week, as I'm sure the other shops are as well. There are four salons on Third Street. I'm sure that is their busiest day of the week as well. So when there's no parking, you have no customers. So my busiest day of the week, I had less than four people come in. Amber Cardona at Slightly Vintage has, and Theater have been in business longer than I have and have been around this, so they just choose to close that day, which I think is unfortunate that a business has to close two or three times a year because of a party on our street. So when there's no customers, I had talked with Carnitas, Rosalia Carnitas, and the only people she had in her restaurant were people looking to go to the bathroom. The other thing then is that they brought in all these food vendors and the restaurants were not asked if they wanted to participate. I know Carnitas said they were not. So when you have Mexican food set up right outside of a Mexican food restaurant, you can imagine those restaurants did not do well that day. And I think that's very unfortunate. So then fast forward to, I actually closed early because it was just a bust of a day. So then I came in Sunday morning and, as you probably have noticed, I had my building painted. And we spent our own money, no grants or anything, and our hard work. And I come in Sunday morning and the paint job that had just got finished on Wednesday was covered in mud or something smeared all over under the windows on my white panels. So I spent about 20 minutes to a half an hour scrubbing the front of my brand new painted building. There's also, the street was a mess and the sidewalks were a mess. So I thought, okay, Sunday, Monday morning, they'll surely be swept and all of that. I came in to talk to Dave that morning and the streets and sidewalks were still not clean. So then he said he would have them cleaning them Tuesday, which they did. But to my thinking, if the city is going to reserve the street on a Saturday, it's like any of us, if we have a party on a Saturday, when do you clean? Not three days later, but you know, I know that they probably don't want to pay overtime on Sunday, but definitely Monday morning, that should have been on the street department schedule. The sidewalks were covered in food and looked like vomit over in front of the laundromat. The trash cans were full. By then there were flies everywhere. And I don't open on Mondays, but I had talked to several of the business owners and they were messed, they were dealt with a mess on Monday morning. I think that's very unfortunate that our downtown businesses had to deal with that. So then the solution, one thing Dave and I talked about is possibly moving it to the fairgrounds. There's a stage, there's ample parking, there's plenty of room for events. The other thing is we have several parks in our town that are beautiful and they could host a festival like this or any of the festivals that want to close the downtown. As you probably know, probably 90% of our downtown buildings are, or businesses are owned by the, or the same person. I don't know how to say that. The buildings and the businesses are owned by the same people. I know Robbie, you know, you own yours, I own mine, Jose owns his, you know. We have all spent a lot of time and money and blood, sweat and tears to, to bring, I have two on the downtown street, to, to add something to this town. And I would like for the city council to just consider that it is a downtown business district, not a party venue. And as great as these events are, because I saw pictures and I saw them there, the kids were having fun. And I know the volunteers, including Stephanie, put a lot of time into it. And the, the festival that evening was very well attended as well. So I am not taking anything away from all of the volunteers and the hard work that they've done. Just a bad location. It is not new to what we want to do down there with our downtown district. And I hope that you will recognize that and not allow the street closures. Because I'm sure you wouldn't like it if your business or your street was closed up front and somebody had a party and then just left it for you to clean up. And I know that it wasn't, you know, because I've talked to Monica and she said, you know, they did clean up. But it wasn't, you know, there should have been a crew that came back on Sunday for the daylight when not everybody was tired and you could see what was actually going on. And the city should have been able to follow up more. But anyway, that's my, my view of yours. Thank you.
Any councilors have any questions for Lisa or for anything else?
Other than just thank her for coming forward, it gives a different perspective on, I know that a lot of these are growing, getting more attendance, so it's nice to have that.
Well, I know when I helped with it for years with being P T O president, it was always on Spencer Street and it was this fun little thing. And it has blossomed and grown and there's a Hispanic festival attached to it, which, like I said, those are wonderful things. We, we need them and I want them to continue. I just want our downtown that we have been striving to make better and prettier and more businesses to just be that. It's our downtown, something that people can just run out for a party.
Well, then also, you know, when they have these events, they have to have insurance, right? So if something ever does get damaged, it can't be claimed.
Like the window was broken at the laundromat as well.
I'm just saying, right? So they do have insurance that they're supposed to have to have these festivals. So if anything majorly got damaged or somebody wanted to put that claim in, they actually can't do that.
Luckily I was able to clean off, but when I first saw it, I had no idea whether, you know, and I know it's white paint, I'm going to have to touch up, but when it was four days old, it was just, I almost stood there and just cried that morning. It was not what I wanted to see.
That's understandable.
Now, how will I know how this gets resolved? I know you're not going to make a decision tonight, but.
Well, I don't think that there's any further festivals or any street closures for the rest of the year, correct?
Well, until somebody asks for it, right?
Right, but I meant annual things that are large to close off, close down Third Street.
Let me guess, you have something to say?
When we're done with this, it's going to actually have something slightly different to say.
Yeah, so.
Feel free to continue and I'll.
Yeah, so.
There's nothing to library. Oh, the holiday, holiday open house.
So we don't close Third, we don't close Third.
Yeah, Lee said that's the only other baby venue coming up, is the holiday open house.
Okay. So you may have new people on the council when these events come up next, because there's.
So is there something that can be put into your rules and regulations that does not allow the streets to be closed in our busiest downtown district? On Third Street, Spencer and Calhoun, no street closures. Is there a way to just make that?
Do an ordinance or something to state that?
Unfortunately, I think what you could look at is those type of events, it's going to come down to each individual council to make that decision as to what's up here. It's, it's kind of hard to, since you're not going to do it and have new members come in, that maybe have a different idea. It's like trying to, it's just bad presence. I think it's, it's going to come down to each individual council. So I would think that if there are members, you know, if we do have new members, I think when the next one comes, I think those members that are still here, you know, we have to have that discussion and just remind them we had that request and that's something that's going to be considered.
It can't be added to an ordinance?
I, I haven't seen it added to an ordinance because you're, you're really setting a bad precedence that you're anti future councils that may want to do that. And they could change, I mean, if you did the ordinance and you have different council, they'd go and change it. So you're just better off to just have those discussions. But I think, you know, there's going to be enough of, you know, there's going to be at least three council members, you know, still here. So when the next festival comes, I don't know if it's next spring or winter, but it's something we'll have to remember and have that discussion.
And like I say, I, I think if they're suggesting that they go to Kimberly Park or they go to the fairgrounds or someplace that's really set up for bigger parking and when things get filled, it's just on the ground, it's not all over our sidewalks and it doesn't deter from our businesses and we lose money that day.
Your comments will be, that will be part of the record of the city.
Okay, next is Stephanie Allen. Do you want to?
I'm Stephanie Allen, one of our colleagues, and I'm one half of the Royal Spiegel Puppet Theater company. Monica Leo works the other half and she's been joining us this evening. I am, however, authorized to speak on her behalf. Will I simply say thank you? That's all I wanted to do, just come by and say thank you. We have already done a job of probably thanking all of our sponsors, but as you probably know, it takes a lot more than money to get something like this done. And this festival has been going on for the last 24 years and it has grown a little bit bigger every single year. And this year, I think the growth we saw was truly exponential. We invited and welcomed visitors and tourists from not only the state of Iowa and, you know, nearby parts of Illinois, but also parts as far away as the border of Illinois and Indiana. So we're really delighted to see that happening with tourists in West Liberty. And I don't think that that kind of growth is possible without some serious support from the community. So I just wanted to come by and thank everybody who's always just kind of doing their job and not really getting enough gratitude for it. So top of my list, the West Liberty Police Department. Sergeant Lira has been out there making all the cops look like good guys for the last 17 years and he's doing a wonderful job of it. We're very grateful. Nicky has been incredibly generous with the Rondome Park. He also provided us with some porta potties, which probably wasn't the funnest thing to do. So we're grateful for that as well. Speaking of less than fun jobs, the Department of Public Works deserves, as always, a huge shout out. They are the unsung heroes of our daily personal hygiene. I always say if a town works, it's because public works works. So they brought garbage cans and we are very grateful for the garbage cans. They also removed the garbage cans, which was no small task. Please consider giving them all the big, huge raise. We'd also like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for providing the insurance in case there is any kind of issue. And as well as the, you know, bless the not least, the city manager, the city council members, the mayor, city clerks, everyone who's involved in the paperwork process, making sure that everything goes smoothly. We thank you all from the bottom of our hearts. It's been 24 years of growth and expansion and we look forward to working with you and, and bringing support for another, you know, bunch of years. So thank you all, thank you very much. It is a great night. Stephanie here.
Okay, also Charles Potter, it's his last meeting. We wanted to thank him for his much appreciated dedication to West Liberty. So thank you, Charles. I don't know if you can, yeah, hi, Charles. So we wanted to recognize him, this is his last meeting.
Is there anyone else for public comments here for the city? I don't see anyone else in the audience. Is there anyone for public comments on Zoom?
I do not see.
Okay. We'll go down with the councilors then. Councilor Steph.
I think the festival was a huge success. Stephanie says 24 out of 25 years growing and attracted, attracting a number of people to town is, is good for the town. It's a one day in a year. Consider that. And people having fun without the presence of alcohol or any stimulants. I will go behind the festival anytime.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's my record.
Only, I received very similar comments from a resident here, which I believe City Manager Hovland responded to from Jennifer Wetter. Right, so basically very similar issues.
Okay. Councilmember Rock. Dave, do we have anything from the public emails or phone or anything else?
I said, Ms. Bullwater could contact us regarding the festival and a couple other issues. And I, and I reached out to her and responded and got through a page from our staff that I met personally with her, which I think I had notified all of you that I had met her that day. And she appreciated this. Quick cutbacks.
Sounds great. Let's move on to old business. We have a resolution in front of us. This is 2021-09-07-38. This is updating the fire department with an increase to EMS ambulance department staff.
I would make a motion to postpone this indefinitely.
There is a motion to postpone indefinitely on the floor. Is there a second?
There's a second, bud.
There's a second. Is there any discussion? I know we got a bunch of information sent to us in the last day or two. Discussion of, of postponing indefinitely or any thoughts considered.
I'd like to hear the reasons behind your motion, if you would.
We're under litigation. We have no 28 E agreement signed. I have concerns about hiring all these extra people when we don't have, we don't have 28 E and those extra people are also to cover all of the rural areas. I think we need more time to go over this, the thing, the information that we just got in the last couple days.
I agree with the boss.
You know, I don't think we've had enough time to actually go through all of that information that we just received.
Any further discussion?
No, I, I would agree, I would agree with what Diane said. And also have somebody at full time in charge down there. If there's going to be that many people coming through the door, we need some kind of supervision down there.
Okay, well, I, I, I don't think that we can continually forever push, push this backward. You know, have to come up, I mean, do we need another work session? Do we need to figure out the numbers together so that both entities can come together and understand these numbers? And.
Would it be possible to have another work session? So we could talk about this before, that way, we got more information, obviously, this time.
Well, I understand though, but the problem is, right, like she said, we're under litigation. Until that is completed, all of a sudden, it ain't going to matter what we come up with. I mean.
Dave, can you, can you turn with our attorney to see if we can add work sessions?
Sure.
Without, I mean, with litigation, because, you know, I understand the litigation and that, but we also need to try to figure out something that's going to, you know.
I will.
Yes.
I will contact our attorney first thing in the morning and then, excuse me, in the background, send that to all of you.
Okay. Well, there is a motion and a second. Anything else? Since there is a motion and a second, I do have to take a vote. Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember McBarren?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharias?
Yes.
Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Passes five zero. I guess we will cut that on. Please let the council know how much we can do and can't do from Jamie, okay?
I'll try to have an answer.
Because we're going to need, we need to move forward.
Yeah, I'll try to, you can answer for him tomorrow.
Okay. And Mindy, once we have that answer, I will have City Manager Hovland contact you. Because we do, we need to move forward to that, so.
Yeah, absolutely. It does need to be moved forward.
But, but, but if we can still have another work session to try to figure out and, and come to an understanding of the two entities, so we can do that.
Our lawyer has already told us that as long as it has to do with new business and hiring of personnel, that there is no issue with having a work session.
Okay, once, once we get that from our attorney, then we'll make contact.
Mindy, would you repeat what your attorney had said? That there's no issue with new business and hiring.
With new business, correct, and hiring of personnel for the ambulance.
Thank you.
The reason why I ask councilwoman is because we, in the city council, we know what's going on. Thank you to believe that we know, but we have people on Zoom listening to us
We have new business with a handful of resolutions. First one is Resolution dash 43. And this is approving the city website service agreement between the city and Big Imprint.
My understanding, talking with, with City Clerk Lee Gerst, is that the city had approved an agreement to go to work with it, Imprint, or I think to continue some services. There was an agreement, so Jacob Lane had prepared an agreement. We reviewed it, we sent it down to the attorney, he looked at it as well and then we've got the 40 this evening for your consideration. But Jacob did a really good job getting the first draft put together.
And so do you agree with?
This is, this is for three years. I think this will be beneficial to both parties because it lets them know that we're serious about their business. But then in three years, it lets us revisit pricing.
Motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharias?
Yes.
Councilmember McBarren?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Passes five zero. We're on to Resolution dash 44, amended the fee schedule. There a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
This motion is a second. Is there any further discussion or questions?
And we put a memo in, something that was, it should have been in there, it was like out and she got with it and put it together.
I'm here to test you.
Yeah.
Any other?
It doesn't have it all, but they, but they need to have that figured, like somebody mentioned.
Okay. Is there any further? Hearing none. Councilmember Zacharias?
Yes.
Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember McBarren? Passes five zero. Resolution dash 45, and this is approving library staff position and job descriptions for the library.
Motion.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion or anything that Ally would like? Would you like to?
Five more is already approved.
Just went to our, okay, sounds great. I just want to give that opportunity to you, I tell you what, it's like. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember Rock? Yes. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember McBarren?
Yes.
Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zacharias? Passes five zero. We are on to Resolution dash 46. This is a change order, city hall and police department, or police building upgrades. And this is with S G construction.
I don't think, we haven't got, probably the last. Yeah, I keep it late and I think we watched it, actually.
We just have the one thing of 44.
I have not seen that. And I, I think this is the one we messaged Dave and I on and moved it to the next meeting because it came to me.
Okay.
I think that's the one, but I'm.
So we can table that until the next?
Forty six is tabled.
Yep, 47. Resolution to approve the Second Amendment extension to the city and fire department 28 E agreement. This would be extending our current extension to January 31st.
And that's the request of our attorney. The hope is to, they'll try to, some mediation order to 28 E. Our attorney had sent, listed a couple other mediators, had not heard back. Pretty much we've got pace that we're on.
So, so if I understand this correctly, they threw out mediation, we say fine and get back with them about that, and then we haven't heard anything since then?
They had suggested one mediator, Jamie threw out another couple names of potential folks to mediate for nothing back regarding that.
Okay, I'm.
But feels that we need to go ahead and extend both of these 28s until the end of January.
Reluctantly, I will make a motion to extend.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember McBarren?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharias?
Yes.
Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Passes five zero. Now has, we will still have to reach out and have that extension also approved by the, the rural board, is that correct? I think what, they would have to agree upon that.
I believe the agreement the attorney provided falls for both signatures from the cities.
Yeah.
It's got rural.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we.
That's correct.
Need to get that to them. Hey, let's go ahead into Resolution dash 49.
No, 48.
Oh, did I skip, oh.
Forty eight is. Forty-eight is, and I'll make a motion on that.
Now, I am on the board.
Second.
For the ambulance board, any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilmember Zach Rice?
Yes.
Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
McBarren?
Yes.
Okay, both of those extensions pass.
So we'll give both of those to Zach Rice?
Yes.
Okay, now we're down to forty-nine, and this is the write-off, bad debt, write-off to the city utility end ambulance bill. There's a second, there's motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
We'll share Diane's. Yeah.
Okay, just, just so people kinda in the audience and that know, how much are we writing off, so they kinda know how much we write off every year annually?
What we're writing off?
Yes.
So with utility billing, we're writing one thousand eighty-eighty-three, and those are due to increments that are below forty. We can't collect on anything that's below forty dollars, or we don't have a social security number on file. And then for the ambulance, we're writing off five thousand five hundred and four dollars and sixty-five cents. And again, those are no social security numbers collected, or they're Medicare, Medicaid, and we cannot collect on those.
Right, okay, and is this the first, if, if I, if, if I remember correctly, this is the first time we're writing off for the ambulance?
It is not.
No?
This happens, yes, this happens frequently.
I just, I just didn't remember, cause I know that we talked about in our work session about writing stuff off and.
Yeah, so anytime if anybody's out with a social security number collected, Medicare, Medicaid, we cannot collect on any of those items.
Right, and, and I understand, you know, we have people on the interstate and that, and different things, so.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Is that it?
No.
That's with write-off portion.
Yes.
Yep, okay, uh, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmember Zach Rice? Councilmember McBarren?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Okay, write that off then. We are back to library business, and this is, uh, appointing, I'm asking for a motion to, and then McMichael, to the West Liberty Public Library Board. And this is a term to be in effect until September two thousand twenty.
Motion.
Sir, motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes five zero. Ally, are you gonna contact your attorney, why not still?
Right now.
Oh. She's over there texting. Okay, so I know the favorite discussion every year around this time is the trick or treat. Discussion inappropriate, follow-up, the date and time for trick or treat, trail and citywide trick or treat.
What day is that, just shit?
October thirty-first.
And what did we do this last year, I checked, we were the.
Last year there was no trail.
It's a Saturday.
No, but for trick or treating, we gave them, what was it, it was an hour and a half, or was it two hours?
No, it was a Sunday.
Well, this year.
I thought we extended it just a little bit.
This year is a Sunday, that sounds right.
It might have, because there was no trail.
Correct, I think we extended it to two hours, is that correct?
Cause there was no trail.
My understanding for last year, is that right?
I don't remember, cause I was the.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, I was the.
Uh, I, I, I vaguely remember that we.
It was two hours, I think, wasn't it?
Extended it, I know that we did two hours like a handful of years ago.
Right.
People didn't like that, then we went to it last year, I don't, I hadn't heard any feedback.
Maybe it was an hour and a half.
An hour and a half.
That's something more like it. Yeah.
I, I, right, I just couldn't remember.
So is, are, is the trail being done this year?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's been working on, doing that here.
But I still, since they have the trail, right, we still give them an hour and a half to get around, okay? So I'd like to make the motion to keep it an hour and a half.
So the.
Make a motion to do the trail and the trick or treat, citywide, what date, yeah, are we gonna keep it, or October thirty-first?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be Sunday then.
And then are you gonna do the trail an hour before house to house?
Yes.
So five to six on the trail, and six to seven thirty at the.
Yes.
You're really generous.
You know what, I love Halloween, and I know the kids.
More power to you.
But, but no, but if you really look at it, right, all the parents go out, a lot of kids get dressed up, they spend the money for kids to dress up, they like to go out and run, right? I don't think we've ever had any major problems with the kids being around. So I mean, I think we give them that time, right, cause they don't get to do it very often.
I remember around eight times, so I, well.
Okay, so there's motion for day, uh, for Sunday, October thirty-first, five to six trail, six to seven thirty P M for house to house. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
No, I'll do my usual no.
Passes four.
In matters of, before you jump down to the day for your council work session, the change order that we didn't have stuff on, I think it came in late, and that change order was for work, then, I think it's already been discussed. It's for putting in that, and if you recall, when we toured the police department, they're putting that other door in between, it's for that door. It was the removal of the drinking fountain, and there was a light fixture that was going into, I think, one of the restrooms. And I don't know if Leo's got the, I don't remember that change order handy, Cherry thought she had it on the OneDrive, but, but we don't have it.
I do not have that handy, I am sorry, I could get that for you by the end of the meeting here, if you want.
I think it's something, I think it was less, I think it's less than eight thousand.
Leo, is there a problem if we put it off till the next one?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
I, I don't know, uh, city manager, do you know, is the work already started, do you know on that part of it?
He's gonna share her screen.
Lee, Lee's gonna share the screen, and I think they've already started framing the door, the water fountain, I think.
Yeah, she.
Cause I looked online.
So she says it was the pay estimate, I can pull that up. Just a second, pull this up.
Yeah, I have it, I have it in the shared drive here, let me see if I can.
I've got it up.
I've got it in front of me right now, it's seven thousand five hundred and nine dollars for the change order.
Yep.
The south P D door, removal of the drinking fountain and the, and the restroom light.
Yeah.
Seven thousand five hundred.
So it was work, um, it was work that the chief had, he had noticed with the door structure, um. And so therefore, we went ahead and ordered the door, and then the water fountain had to be removed, um, for the placement of the door. Uh, again, that's gonna be separating the outside, where we have the council chamber door, and then putting in a secure door uh, in between that door and the police department for security.
A door, the next door will be locked, it'll have to be either let in or buzzed in from the. And I believe, Lee, is it not correct, that they're gonna have a phone out there?
Right, so then the, where the glass door is at, that'll become more like the vestibule, where they'll have the phone at. So then when, uh, community members need to contact the police department, they can step in there, out of the element, contact dispatch, and then they'll wait for an officer to meet him at that door.
The fourth side entrance right there, that entryway right there.
So we'll be outside no more, it'll be actually inside.
Where we used to have our coats up at?
Yep, yep.
That area, everywhere.
Yep, I do remember you told them.
There'll be a doorway.
Okay, and, and, and the reason this came about, I, was the fact that, I think that the plan was put together, you know, they, they, they wanted some input from the chief on a couple of things, and he's made a few minor changes and tweaks, as I understand, through the process of those kinds of bills.
Can we go back to resolution forty-six, and I'll make a motion?
Sure, for seven thousand.
Seven thousand five hundred and nine dollars.
Yep, seven five zero nine, yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, would this, are there any possible change orders, how are we looking, uh, um, about coming into under budget? Or the project?
No.
Lee, Leo?
Yeah, it doesn't, so they also have pay estimate number five on, on here, and.
That's not.
That's, that's gonna be the next meeting.
That's gonna be at the next meeting, but if you looked at that pay estimate, it looks like you're probably coming in, um, probably about um, approximately fifty thousand dollars above what the bid cost was because of the change orders.
And what kind of contingency did you have built into that?
We probably had about twenty percent into this starting out, I don't know what the actual budget number that they actually had.
So Leo, um, the four hundred thousand covers the, the building piece of it, the, the HVAC system was under building and grounds. We separated that out, it's just, it's gonna show up underneath the project, but we have to separate it, separate it out per the bond um, that we placed it under building and grounds and not in this bond. Again, that's a clerk financial thing, but I just, I want council to understand it, we're not over budget, it's just that, that had to be separated out from the four hundred thousand in order to make it work.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so far, we haven't gone over our twenty percent.
So what, what we ought to do is, when the project's complete though, we ought to do what, what they call, the DOT likes us to do this too, like a, a final change order that more or less just puts all the money in the right categories. And that way, you'll be able to, to kind of follow, in, in the, in the future, you'd be able to follow the, here's what the money that paid for this part of the project, here's the money that paid for that part of the project. Cause it, it sounds, you know, if somebody just looked at it like a snapshot, like I did, they don't understand how the, how the funds are being paid.
Right, I, I apologize for adding five more minutes to the discussion, but when we were talking about change orders and having, you know, a magnitude of this project, I was just thinking, you know, that was a thought that I had, was. Okay, any further? Hearing none, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Brian?
Yes.
Councilmember Zach Rice?
Yes.
And Rock?
Yes.
Passes.
Sorry, it's a little confusing.
That's okay. Roll the punches. Setting a date for the work session, October nineteenth, and do we have a topic with this, uh, date?
How do we defer to Lee?
Lee, do we have a, do we have?
She does not have a topic.
I, I, I didn't have a topic, I, again, I just placed it there just in case, based on discussions tonight uh, with the ambulance staffing, so I didn't have any other topic.
Okay, so why don't we just go ahead and, and, uh, put this on our agenda, and for some reason, if it's not needed, uh, at our next council meeting, we can go ahead.
Well, you think maybe a work session with Jamie, so we can actually find out what we can do, what we can't do?
With just us and Jamie?
Correct, so that way, we can just find out what's.
Well, that would be a, probably.
That would, that would be a close session. You know, where they've done work session.
Right.
Right.
But I'm just saying, I think maybe we need to find out, right, what we can and what we can't do, if we wanna go forward with some of the fire and, or the ambulance stuff. I think we really, I think that would be a great work session, and the fire, I mean, the ambulance people could be here too, and they could hear firsthand what we're actually can, or do, I don't know. No, I mean, that's what I'm thinking.
On, on, on closed legal, you know, that, that would be just.
Well, not a closed session, I think we could have an open session. Yeah, I mean.
I don't know.
No, I think we have enough information from the lawyers saying, you know, we are trying to do the mediation. Right, right, okay.
I guess I'm not ready to have a work session yet on it, until we have more information, and
Okay.
we find out if they're willing to, to work with a mediator.
Okay, that's, very perfect, okay.
Okay, so let's, can, can we just set the date for it, and we can always take it off the, the agenda at the first meeting in October, if it's not needed?
Okay.
Or would it be easier just to set it first meeting of the month?
Oh, based on us contacting the attorney, you might, I mean, we could just wait, and we could just set it at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
Okay.
Okay. We have reports, city engineer, Leo, you're up first.
Okay, um, I met with the city manager, um, we went over some of the C I P items, we did, we also took a look at Miller and Fourth Street, as that was with, um, Councilmember Smith, that's been a, a problem area in the past, still a problem area. Um, it's got some ADA concerns, al- along with, if you've tried to fix the entire, um, the entire intersection, so just today, I sent to a city manager the, kind of an estimate of what we had done in the past on Fifth and Clay, and then if we add in the intersection roughly how, how much cost that could be, and then, then the city just can decide if they wanna go forward that way, or if they wanna go a different direction. Um, but that should be easily discussed at the next meeting. Um, well, number two, same thing, met with Ed as well as Danny, and discussed on the brushing, as well as, um, the roof and the fence work. I think we have it all packaged together, so by October fourth at that meeting, you're gonna have in front of you an entire accounting of what's going on and schedule, and make sure everybody can meet that schedule. That's next up, to get that work done. Uh, one thing I haven't talked to you guys about yet, we did the risk and resiliency report that was done in June. When we contracted with you for doing that report, we told you we'd have to come back to you and do an emergency response. I'll be talking to Danny in the next week or so about whether he wants to try to do that emergency response, or whether he wants V N K to do it. We've been charging about five thousand dollars to do that, and it's due December thirtieth, so we've got a little bit of time here, and hopefully in October, we'll get that settled out. And that's all I had, oh, excuse me, one more thing, Dutton Acquisition Platt has been, uh, signed, and, um, pins have been set. The first, um, First Street Bible five, First Street Boundary Survey's been done, and pins have been set, and I think we'll record both of those in the next week or so. With that, any questions?
Yeah, uh, I was just curious about, um, when we start looking at that Fourth and Miller that you first brought up, I know that is really bad, but those kind of are historic brick streets.
Correct, that would be a question.
I'm wondering whether or not on the intersection alone, we could accommodate concrete, but the actual block could maintain the brick.
So in the intersection itself, you have, you have concrete, and then at the edges of the intersection, it, it, it attaches to a brick street, is that what you mean?
Uh, I don't know if that's possible, or.
Well, I think that is, no, that is very, very possible.
I, I hate.
Get an option that way.
Get rid of, like, if we're really gonna look at replacing that, or whatever.
It's really bad.
It is.
And you gotta look at, you, you, you probably, anybody that's been out there will realize the curbs are messed up, so you're gonna have to redo the curbs, as well as the ramps coming down from each one of them.
But I, I was wondering if, just on the intersection alone, we could, or, um, that and the ADA compliance with, you know, more contemporary look? Or, because it, it seems like that would be more function with the concrete? And still keep the brick integrity, I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, I, I know we can bond, or we can bond, go right up against the brick, and then it's a matter of how far back would we want to go with that brick? You know, right now, if you look at it, there's asphalt, brick, concrete, all kind of in there together, but I think we could make it, we could make it look a lot better, and and, um, like you said, keep the brick as much as we can on the streets.
My question then would be, we do have a resolution or ordinance on our books, I believe, that talks about total amount of repair and, and if it's X amount over, then we go concrete only, does that count, does? My concern is, when you're talking about the ADA cutouts and everything, that's gonna be, does that go on to the cost of the street? And also putting a concrete square in the middle of the intersection, does that, I mean, how does that work with our formulence, with our. And also putting a concrete square in the middle of the intersection, does that, I mean, how does that work with our ordinance, with our ordinance, uh? Counting toward, or we do, or we don't use bricks? I don't know.
That's, that's something I can research when we put our contract together, but right now, um, I, I wouldn't be able to give you that answer.
I just, I saw that, talking about that, I think that's why there's been always relentancy to maybe do a overall, oh, a whole overhaul of maybe those intersections. Because it may end up exceeding those, that, that expenditure, and then you have to get rid of bricks.
Yeah.
But we're always getting rid of the bricks in the intersection.
I, I know, but what I'm saying is the total cost, if we went, I'm, I'm just thinking about.
Because we're not talking about putting brick back in there.
Right, and if we, if, does the A D A cutouts for the sidewalks, does that count towards considered a street, or is that a separate? Project?
It would be separate from the square footage of the street that we're looking at.
Correct, I just didn't know if it goes to the total cost. That's right.
The whole project.
The, the whole project.
Well, yeah, because we're gonna do it all at one time, I mean, I hope we're not gonna, you know, it.
Terrible, and terrible.
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm just.
When we do the curbs at those corners, it's gonna have to all be done at one time.
Yes.
But is there a way to split it though, right, split, say.
So that you know this, this much is.
Have two different projects going at the same time.
This much is for sidewalks and this much is for streets?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we can't, so we don't, so that we, we don't go over a certain amount of budget, and then it then, you know, triggers that.
Leo, are you following all of this?
I, I am following it, I, I didn't know that the ordinance has a dollar figure in it, so if you do so much work per dollar, you have to be careful.
Percentage.
I don't know if it's a dollar amount or a percentage of square footage.
The percentage of square foot is more typical of what I've seen in the past, but let me, let, I'll research it, and I, I'll be ready on the next meeting.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to save the bricks, I'm just.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, staff, uh, city staff, the minutes?
Somebody has any questions, any of the minutes?
Anything from the report that's in there?
Congratulations, Alex. Thank you.
And then to the parks, right, I mean.
Yeah, Friendship Park was actually nice.
Yes.
They're doing outstanding work, can't wait, he said there's one more park to go, and I can't wait to see what that looks like from the last two days.
Nick said he, he drove down this weekend, you know, kind of later in the evening, and there were just tons of kids still playing, and.
Yeah.
And he said a lot of, uh, good comments, I think, because Jake had put something up on the Facebook page, and then a lot of shares and comments.
Right.
Nick has been very responsive.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And sewer, we're on the sewer report? Is Craig with us tonight? Craig Durkins?
He's not here.
Okay, anybody have any questions or anything about sewer report that? Okay?
Not the sewer, but I, I did wanna make mention the fact that I attended the League of Cities with, uh, C Quirkerts and C manager, Hugland. And I found that to be very fascinating, I, I'm glad I was able to attend.
It was really good comments, that's a really good session, I'm not sure the sessions that you attended with the ones that I went to were phenomenal.
Yeah.
There, there was.
Yeah, and I did get some information at the, um.
This meeting?
At the main.
Oh, the exhibit hall?
Yeah, exhibit hall, that I have been meaning to bring down for, um, some of the staff who is interested. It's just resources, additional resources.
I picked up some things too, I know I, uh, the police chief was looking at, of ways to get her stuff, and I said, I, I used Purple Wave in the past. Purple Wave charges the city a percentage, and there was an exhibitor that, it's out of Wisconsin, they do the same thing, and they don't charge the city a fee, so. I gave it my contact, he reached out to me today, so we're gonna get some more information, see how it compares to Purple Wave. There's a potential way to get rid of equipment that you're making a little more money. See. There were some good exhibitors there.
Yeah.
They contacted several.
With no more business, I would entertain a motion. Motion in a second, any further discussion, hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, we're closed. Thank you guys for your time and effort tonight.